Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Brookline Select Board Meeting.
Great, members of the public, oh, I'd like to introduce Mr. President of the room. He has select board members Paul Madalinski, Samara Sawick, Dan Noga, Bruce Smella, myself, Dan Maggio. Reporting for Vanessa Ballou, Highway Supervisor Everett Park Phillips. And online, we have Fact TV, Leanne Parker and Dan Towler. Welcome, everyone, that you could make it tonight. So the only schedule we can, we just did those two. I introduced the members of the public. And I'm guessing, Leanne and Ben, you're here for item 5A, the bids for the painting, correct? Or do you have something else you wanted to bring to the select board detention at this time?
No, just the bids.
All right, so we're going to go review and approve the minutes from the meeting of October 18th, 2023. Seven pages, does anyone have any changes on page one of seven? Does anybody have any changes on page two of seven? Anybody have any changes on page three of seven? Anybody have any changes on page four of seven? Anybody have any changes on page five of seven? Anybody have any changes on page six of seven? Anybody have any changes on page seven of seven? Hearing that, I'd like to make a motion to accept the draft minutes as final minutes as presented from the October 18th, 2023 Select Board Minutes as presented. May I have a second?
I'll second this.
Seconded by Paul, any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor of approving the minutes as presented from October 18th signify by saying aye. Any opposed, extensions? All right, excellent, minutes are approved. So the next unfinished business, we're going to open a little early, but we're going to move on through things. Open the, uh, open sealed bids for the painting of the Brooklyn Meeting House steeple stores and shutters. We have two bids. Paul, let's give you the honest for that one. And then, Samara, you guys are two new people, so I'll let you present the second bid.
Okay.
I do have a copy of the request for proposal that we put out. Just for information, I did send out additional hard copies to the following painters, besides putting it in the newspaper three times. Fremont Painting in Wilmington, Charbonne Paintings in Wilmington, Southern Vermont Painters and Restoration of Dumerson, River Valley Painters of Guilford, Norm Holden of Luthane, Sprague Painters of Whitingham, and 802 Painters, Rattleboro, and Momon, how do you say that? Momonny?
Momonny.
Momonny, but his name is Mo.
Yes.
Okay, that's right. Momonny. So those are the ones who were solicited. All right, Paul, what do you have?
Well, you want me to read the whole thing or?
Well, um, this is for the painting. First of all, does it have a insurance and a lead certificate on it?
Yep.
Okay, let's check it again. Oh, Guy Tanser has also joined us as a member of the public.
Lead safe are, you know.
Okay. So the paper, the insurance, okay, that is all there, okay. So what is the, does he have a summary or just a?
Well, there, there is, but the cost to restore this steeple will be $23,800. It includes labor materials, a 65-foot lift. The cost for the lift after all expenses, including environmental charges, trucking insurance and fuel will be $4,500.
Is that part of the bid?
It sounds like not.
So it's $23,800 plus $4,500?
That's what it looks like.
Okay.
You want me to read that again?
Yes, if you don't mind.
It includes labor, materials and the 65-foot lift. And then in parentheses, including its required insurances, delivery, et cetera. The cost for the lift after all expenses, including environmental charges, trucking, insurance and fuel will be $4,500.
So it sounds like it included, included, um.
One more.
Well, 28,200.
Yeah, 28,300. This is a one-month rental. It costs the same for two weeks rental as one month. If it rains for a period of time during the lift rental, there is enough time to compensate for inclement weather when it was locked, when it is locked in for a month. It includes three coats of paint. The paint should last at least 15 years. And then he says he's painted multiple steeples, churches throughout Southern Vermont.
Who is that?
Momonny.
Momonny.
Oh, that's Momonny?
Scope of work says scrape the entire steeple service thoroughly to remove as much old paint as possible. We use one and a half inch hand scrapers, sharpened steel scrapers. This type of scraper removes more old paint than traditional carbide scrapers due to their small width and sharpness. Once the steeple is scraped, we will watch it with a bleach solution to remove road dirt, pollen, mold, mildew and any other surface contaminants. After the steeple is suitably dried, we will apply a complete coat of slow drying oil primer then to consistency that will allow maximum absorption. Oil-based primer is absorbed by bare wood and seeps into any cracks. In contrast, latex primer does not penetrate the cracks and bare wood like oil primer. Cracks and trim and other detail areas will be caulked after priming. When the oil primer is dried, we will apply two complete coats of bi-grade acrylic finish. And then it goes on to the, to the bid. You know, wait, wait, there is something at the, thank you for the opportunity to provide you with a quote for painting the Brookline Church steeple, shutters and doors per RFP. Of note, the church steeple contains lead paint. Momonny Painters is an EPA slash VT lead safe confirmed certified firm. And we follow EPA VT standards for lead paint products. That is six sheet, six mil plastic sheeting on the ground and heap of, heap of vacuums.
Okay, very good. So it's $23,800. I'm still not sure if the $4,500 notation about the.
Yeah, we might have to call on that.
You might have to call on that.
Yeah, if that's included, that includes.
I'll make a note.
Yeah, I can talk them.
Okay.
Is lift included?
I think the lift, it was something else that wasn't a part of it, correct? But Paul was reading it.
I'm sorry.
There was something else that wasn't included. The lift was a part of the, the $27,000.
$4,500 for a one-month rental of the lift, including the insurance and, and environmental disposal, delivery and insurance for that lift. So I'm thinking it's included in there, but it's not clear because if it's not included in the $23,800, then the price of 40, 28.
Why does he break it out?
It's an interesting process.
I can, yes.
Unless, yeah. All right, Samara, you had a second bid?
802 painting provided a bid. They have, they have, um, provided their insurance coverage certificate, policy declaration. They've provided a certificate of attendance and successful completion, let's say renovator supervisors. They have, so they have, let's, I guess that means they're, I haven't compared it to the other certificate, but it led safe certificate. Their bid is not as detailed. However, it says, um, the description is repaint steeple and spire, scrape, sand, wash, prime and paint. And then the first bullet point is steeple to be scraped to remove all loose falling paint, any loose boards to be nailed back, pressure washed with bleach to remove any mold and dirt buildup, entire steeple primed with an oil-based primer caulked where needed. Two top coats of latex paint and then parenthetically SW Emerald.
Sherwin-Williams.
Yes, Sherwin-Williams Emerald or BM Regal, which is.
Benjamin Moore.
Yeah, Benjamin Moore, right. Shutters to be removed and scraped, washed and primed. Two coats of latex paint work to be performed with an 85-foot lift. Estimate includes all materials and labor. Thank you for your business. We hope to hear from you soon. And their estimate is $17,600. And there is no additional parenthetical on lift. So the difference in the bid price depending is either about what's 65 or?
Yeah, $23,600.
Minus 17.
Without the $4,500.
Yeah, I came up with $5,900 without the 4,500.
Well, let's see, what did I type in? All three, 800 minus 17.
6200.
23,800.
Okay, minus 17.
Who's, who's really saying that?
Yeah, well, then I.
Then what, the most?
17,600.
It includes labor materials and the 65-foot lift.
And he just broke out the cost of the rent.
Yeah, he must have broke out the cost.
The total was talking.
So it was 23,500, 23.
23,500, 22.
23,800.
20,800. There's 17,600.
17,600.
$10,000.
Yeah.
$100. I just typed up, so.
All right, um, I'll go into it, just make a motion and then go into a discussion. Now, motions, have a discussion. So motions, oh, it's, I made a motion that we, uh, anybody can make a motion.
You started and may as well finish.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we accept a bid for $17,600 from 802 Painters to do the church steeple work as advertised. I have a second before we go into discussion.
Second.
Seconded if I stand over. Discussion, I will make note that the 802 Painters are the same person who actually painted the school. He actually took off. He, he took off lunch.
Was that the school?
Yeah, he, he was, uh, worked for Momonny before and now he has developed his own company and has got certification. Um, so we're saying, are you have a lot of?
Well, I'll make it simple because I'll do this all. Mo sent me, Momonny sent me a list of stuff that needed to be considered. You have, I would, I would suggest that we make sure the correspondence of that, that anybody can accept. Of course, it's probably excited, oh, because he gave me the list.
Do we have the bid to refer to? I did, so that we keep, we.
Our bid.
Your bid. Should I read it out loud?
Um, yeah, I mean, I guess if it's not too long, read it out loud.
The bids are being solicited for painting the exterior of the historic Brooklyn Church steeple, shutters and two front doors. It found certificate of insurances required in submitting your bid as well as a copy of your lead paint certification and anticipated start date. Neither one's had a start date, correct? Neither bid had a start, no.
Neither bid, neither bid.
Neither bid has a start date. Work must be completed by September 1st, 2024 and expected to the satisfaction of the select board before painting. Methods and materials for the exterior painting are as follows. Provide a suitable high-reach lift to access the side and head walls of the steeple. Scrape all loose and failing paint, seal, nail, hedge knots with stain kill. That was not mentioned.
No, unless that would be, that would be part of the materials.
That's part of the scope of.
There would be a question.
Power wash with bleach under TSP, then rinse with clean water. Oil prime is necessary, any wood to be painted, repaired, re-nail any loose platforms with stainless shield, stainless ring shank nails, caulking is necessary. Two coats of acrylic Sherwin-Williams latex exterior paint or agree upon equivalent. Shutters and the two front doors will also be scraped as necessary, caulked and painted with the same materials and procedure as the steeple. The town assumes the right to reject any and all bids and to accept the bid it deems most favorable for the town. Bidders are expected to make an appointment with the building commissioner, or to be now evaluated. Project S, C, F should be submitted to the Town of Brookline, such and such. Okay, and the electronic delivery. Okay, so bids you'll open are regularly scheduled meeting on November 1st at approximately 17:00. So that is the, the.
Yeah, so, so from what you've read, it seems like some items were mentioned in both bids, but not all items.
Right, and I think that's, that's fine. You know, they don't have to copy, I mean, we had, and they ask for SOW and that's.
But there's.
And presumably, if there's anything critical, we wanted to put it in the contract. Yes.
Our video.
Good to hear, Paul.
I'd say there are videos that you can look at online. The video that I was looking at is from the state of Vermont. Said that, uh, when he runs over, that's before 1978, have to assume that it was like that. Now, with that said, it also said, now Keith, this guy, Mommy here, talks about putting plastic on the ground. But this video said that sometimes you might have to do a vertical aspect. It's fall. He doesn't mention that, I don't think that mentions it. Right next to the daycare center. And I think we really got to be careful about, you know, doing it exactly the way it has to be done. Now, the only thing this video said is that just because a painter has that certification doesn't mean that they're doing it. Someone should be there to supervise.
Yes.
Make sure.
Yes.
So I, with that said, I mean, I'm not sure if it was a leak this door. Or here. Yeah, this.
It wasn't mentioned.
It didn't mention around the perimeter.
No, it didn't mention.
But they're going to follow the rules.
I mean, that would be something, if we accept whatever bid we accept, we should make sure it's spelled out exactly that we wanted to follow the rules because of its proximity to daycare. Because there may be sensitivity to residents that would not be happy to see it not done properly. Things like that.
Uh, when the school was done, that wasn't done, that was done on the ground, six on the ground, it wasn't done.
If it has to do with. Side of the building. It's over two stories.
Oh, hmm.
That's what we've been told. So presumably.
Well, I think.
We should just.
Yeah.
Uh, any other stuff?
Yeah, I, I want to do two things. I want to make sure that these points that Momonny brought up about all the certification, lead and IRC certification, get more people to, listen to people not to, you have to register yourself as a business. I think we have to make sure that we correspond with these. That's first of all. Second point is, in the RFP, you'll notice that I very loosely put two coats of acrylic Sherwin-Williams latex exterior paint or agree upon. That, I put that in there for a reason. So I wanted to make sure that I was sure that the way the building is painted, see the light, know it, see the oil paint, latex, all broke that up. First.
We're having difficulty hearing you folks there. Those of us, those of us who are zooming in.
How about now?
I heard that.
I'm usually told to shut up, not to get louder. Okay, I'll, I'll repeat it quickly, Dan, so you can hear it.
Thank you.
There's a list of specifications that are supposedly legalities that Momonny sent me that I gave the select board of sort of different certifications. And what I was asking the select board to do is to make sure that this corresponds with anybody that, that paints, anybody that paints the building. That was the first part. The second part, which I was just getting into, was I very loosely put in the RFP two coats of acrylic Sherwin-Williams latex exterior paint or agree upon, or agree upon equivalent. And the reason why I did that was twofold. I wasn't sure at the time whether we'd have to do an oil base, which has been verified by Momonny for the first coat, and the quality of the shit, the.
They both said the same thing.
Well, top of the line Sherwin-Williams paint. Who mentioned, wasn't Bear paint, was another paint. Oh, it was Benjamin Moore.
Benjamin Moore Sherwin-Williams.
So I guess what I'm trying to say is, we, I, we want to be the final verdict as to what, what, what paint's being used on that building. I don't want them to, okay, well, we can get this for $5 a gallon less and put that up there. I don't want, want that to happen.
Well, that's part of the inspection and they wouldn't get paid if they didn't use the proper.
Yeah, well, we have to, we have to agree upon what's going to be used on.
I'm going to just check to say, hi, my name is Dot Maggio, I'm the Chair of the Select Board and you are?
Yeah, I'm Rick Morales, I'm a political specialist with the SBA. It's not been on inspiration, we work daily with him. I sent an email to Guy Tanser this afternoon, but I didn't receive any answer, answers. And I tried to find the, the Sherman point of contact on the website. I hope that, well, the website is like no point of more point of contacts. That's the only one that I found. I came here, I was lost, I have been in so many select board meetings. We do media, we do all the kind of government meetings, just to inform about our assistance related to the past loss, layers of days and all that, I just need to talk to you.
All right, I, I wasn't sure if you were here about the painting contract, that's why I wanted to. All right, and Mr. Tanser is online, so when we finish this contract, he'll be able to help us out. All right.
Okay, so I left that loose specifically so we could have.
Yeah, well, we have.
Agreed upon equivalent.
Yes.
So we agree upon what we're going to use and then we're good to go. I'm not going to be an idiot about it, but I want the best, I want the finest paint we can use on this, on this, on this steeple. It's our baby. Oh, thank you.
All right, very good. Um, anybody else? Uh, Leanne and Dan, I'm going to ask, Leanne, you're the Chair of the Committee. Um, do you have any questions for us?
Um, I, I guess what it, uh, what we're, how we're proceeding is that we're assuming that there is lead. Is that correct? We have never tested for lead.
We, we have to assume that the building was built before a certain date, that even though it may have been treated once, it's never going to be completely lead-free. And so we have to, every time that church is painted, it's going to happen to be by a lead-free person.
Well, it is possible that we could have it tested by a certified tester. If they find lead, then what you're saying is true. But if they don't, maybe we could get it certified that there wasn't a.
After this event, I think the next painting we, we'd have to, but I would say right now, we put it out that, that we're assuming that there's lead and we did not.
Both contractors seem to think.
Right.
So you have, you have to assume.
Yeah.
You have to assume, unless you.
I assume it's certified.
But you could have it tested.
Yeah.
And if it was found with.
Not, not the $10 swipe test, but a real test.
You, you, no, you have to have a certified person, you know, a, agency do that test. Now, it might be worth our while to look into how much that would cost. Cause then, all of a sudden, you don't need a lead-certified entity to do the work and, and they wouldn't need to put the plastic down, I mean, all of that.
And then maybe it wouldn't cost either 23.5 or 17.8 or whatever, 23.8 and 17.6.
No, I didn't.
Maybe it would cost significantly less.
Can I give a sort of clarification just because I, I watched.
My first pick up.
I give, just a little clarification to what you're talking about because I watched, I watched Mo do it on the other building. And bake, and I think I put that in the email, basically he scrapes the building. It's got like a little thick pencil that you get at Perkins or WW and it shows the, the presence of lead. So once he sees that, it's over.
Has he seen that?
Has he seen that on the meeting house?
Has it, has Momonny gone and done a test?
What's that?
Has Momonny run the test?
No idea.
The answer is no.
All right, so.
I, I have no idea. I don't think you'd want the painter being the one who does the test.
Tested, exactly, you have to hire a company to do it. See any.
I guess another question, if I still have the floor.
That man.
Um, is the procedure to have, if, if one of these is chosen, is the procedure to have them come in and talk with you about their business? Or is, is this the place that the decision is made or not? I mean, we don't know if 802 painting is going to follow the plastic and the, um, you know, the, all of the precautions that it sounds like Momonny is going to do with, um, some kind of.
I would think that they would have to, in order to maintain their license, they must follow the license procedures. Um, but I, I hear what you're saying.
Well, let's say that, that you have a license, you go and you pay for it, you get a license and you're, and you are, you know.
But then they.
Go ahead and do this type of business, but you have a building that has no lead in it. Right, so.
Okay.
Can, can, I'm just, the whole lead thing has me really flummoxed because we can't pay 23.8. We don't, certainly don't have the money in the, in the kitty at this point to pay 23.8. And I think there's still. And there's still questions on, on 802 painting because he did not identify that he would low, you know, lay plastic and have the ability to clean the air.
I don't think that he, neither one also mentioned, uh, single ring shank nails or the, you know, the, the, uh.
That's just.
Yeah, I'm going to like the entertain stand and then I had an idea about tabling this at this point.
Yeah, 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 I was going to say, as the timekeeper, we're starting to run over on.
Yeah, but this isn't, this is the.
Thank you. Having, having been licensed by the.
Can I see this?
Having been licensed by the state of Vermont for 29 years and somewhat familiar with the process, I have a comment to make on both these certifications. One is from an entity in West Springfield, Massachusetts.
It's a training.
It's a training thing and it, and I'm not sure. I mean, and Paul and Samara, you watched a movie, did they say you had to get a license in Vermont?
Uh, I didn't pay attention to that part of it.
Cause I, I, I took a national test in Springfield. I then went to Berry to take another national test and the state test for Vermont. And, and they didn't accept anybody else's credentials. I had to pass in the state in which I was licensed. So I have a concern that whether or not they're actually able to, whether they're formally licensed, they have certificates, but are they licensed? And one mentions their HUD certified, which has a real important meaning. The other one does not. Uh, if I had, you know.
I noted there when I looked at the bids that the, I mean, you didn't see the 802 bid. The, the certification certificates are really different. One says lead certification training. Yeah. And the other one has a Vermont State sort of seal of approval on it.
So, but it, but it was nebulous, it didn't say it was done by Vermont, so it is a question.
Well, whether, it doesn't even say it's certified. It says they're certified as having taken training. So they know the proper way to do it.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
So we, I think we need to look at that and ask somebody of authority in the state. It doesn't mean they're licensed in Vermont and have adequate credentials. And then the concerns that other people are mentioning about the tarp on the walls. You know, you were, we have a daycare center, we have a family who lives across the road. Uh, and God knows where the, where the breeze might blow, whatever sticks to the brick and the crevices, et cetera, and then end up on the lawn. It would seem to me like, you know, we're, we're looking at someone who has vacuum and or covering walls. So we might want to look and ask each of them what their intentions are in that regard.
Okay, I want to make one point.
So.
If I can. Momonny's done dozens of these. He wasn't going to do it wrong. I'm not saying he didn't follow what you're saying and maybe we should clear that up. But we've got to keep in mind, he's done tons of these.
Leanne just said.
Leanne just said they don't have the money to.
Okay, well, that's. Okay, well, that's a different issue. We're talking later one respect. The money, I was gonna, if I can make a, a, a better, an idea here, I'll still agree with it. But I think we should table it, get all these, all these questions answered, okay?
Yes.
Including where the money's gonna come from. Address your concerns, address Leanne's money concerns. We're in the process of doing the budget now, yes, so we can really, we'll be taking a look at where the funds are at, and then we can clarify all this. In the meantime, it pierces up, the bidding closed, basically, we have two bids. So we can table that and we can.
Well, that's what I wanna move on and do.
Rather than take another fifteen minutes.
Exactly, right. I'm gonna make, uh, so we have a motion on the floor to accept the bid, we've had a discussion. At this point, I'm going to amend the motion and suggest that we table this to further review. Uh, I'm not sure if Bruce, you wanted to do the research on, on this and continue following through and contact the painters, your questions answered, or somebody else to do it?
No, not necessarily. I, I want specifics. I wanna know what you want me to ask, uh, with respect specifically about the lead part. So no, I would say the best, if you want me to do, I'd be happy to do it. I'd just like everybody to submit the questions to me, and then I'll clarify that with you all, and then I'll contact these two individuals. I don't know eight oh two.
Okay, uh, Leanne, so right now we're looking at tabling the motions so that, uh, the building commissioner can do a little bit more research, he'll reach out to the other select board members. I'm gonna make copies of the contract for everyone so that you can look this over the next day or so. And Mr. Mello, and then you can communicate with Bruce any additional changes that you might, or, or concerns or conditions that you wanna make sure is is handled, send it in a written form and an email, just to make it easy on Bruce. And um, we'll bring it up at the next meeting. Is that all right with everyone at this time? Bruce, is, so Bruce is gonna follow up with the painters, we're in charge of sending their questions. That would certainly include the meeting house committee. That is correct, yes. Leanne and Daniel? I'm gonna include you in, um, and if you would like, I'll make a copy of the two bids and, um, leave it in the town office, at the select board mailbox, and you can come in tomorrow and pick them up, and Mr. Tanser should be here. Uh, Guy, is that all right? If I leave them and, I'll put them on Guy's desk and you can pick them up from there, is that all right, Leanne?
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so, so both, both, um.
I guess my question is, uh, Dorothy, is that before you tabled the, uh, the bid, you had an open conversation in regards to whether to vote for that. I think you need to have a vote for that and either have a positive or negative vote.
All right, I, I hear what you're saying. I can do that, I can change it differently and then I'll have a second motion. We're gonna vote, okay? And you, all those in favor of accepting the bid from eight oh two painters as described, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Those opposed, yeah, we, we.
Way it's been, way it's said.
Yes. Okay, so, any extension? Okay, the motion did not pass to accept the bid at seven thousand, seventeen thousand six hundred dollars from eight oh two painters. The discussion was to follow up and put it on the agenda for the next meeting. At, at this point, um, I make the motion that we, I'll, I'll do this. I'm going to make a motion that the building commissioner will follow up with the painters and concur with the rest of the select board members and the meeting house committee members as to those particulars regarding the lead-based painting certification, and it will come back to the next select board meeting. Okay? False seconded. Any other discussion?
No, other than, and also to clarify these different.
That's what you're doing.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask, well, I don't have to ask Mo, cause he already said it, but, but I have to ask this eight oh two painters, whoever he is.
And you could check with the state to see if it's registered.
Exactly.
Yeah. All right, so we have a motion that's been seconded and discussed. All those in favor of tabling this until the next meeting signify by saying aye. Hearing none, the motion passes. Okay, um, I'm gonna step back if you don't mind. Uh, Dan, do you have anything you'd like to add? I'm sorry, Daniel, I.
No, I'll, I'll, um, I'll email Bruce, thank you.
Okay, and like I said, we'll make copies ever for you, so these are the.
Just don't do phone calls, please emails.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, um, at this time, I'm going to step back, we had a, um, a a unscheduled member of the public who came in, he did show me, sent an email to Gwen Tanser on this afternoon, and you got lost on your way here, so, um, come on over.
I can't wait until the, the end, or do you want me, no, no, I'll be here at ten o'clock. Five, five minutes.
So you'll have to introduce yourself in that little machine.
Yeah, um, I'm Rick Morales, uh, Public Affairs Specialist with the SBA, but not regular SBA, the Office of Disaster Assistance. That department, if my accent is weird, I'm from Puerto Rico, you all know that we know about disaster, that's why we are here.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm, I'm, we're still here, I'm doing all kind of meetings, celebratory meetings right now, I was at the celebratory meeting of Doverstone, I'm pronouncing that right? Doverstone, um, I have read recently, uh, assigned Wyngham, I, I have, I have visited almost all the counties here in Vermont. And you'll know that Wyngham is our primary county. Um, I, I have a lot of reasons of why I'm visiting here today. Because you all know that a lot, a lot of people that suffer damages move to other counties. So that's why we visit all the towns on the primary counties, even though if you don't see like a lot of damages, a, a little bit of damages or no damages. Uh, we are visiting specifically government, because the government, government helps us to share the information with the, uh, citizens through social media, website, with your network, networking friends, or you can have people here from the other counties, or people here with, um, families in the other counties, like you all know that Washington County is like more affected in very city, Montpelier. And, and I'm glad that, that TV is here too, because it's very good for us, uh, it's a good, important stakeholder for us, the TV, newspapers, radio. We are still doing that pushing the information. The latest, uh, information is that, uh, with, uh, SBA and FEMA, the deadlines, the approaching deadlines were yesterday, but why I'm here today, because FEMA and SBA, we're still have uh, the two a weeks grace period. That means that the people still can apply with FEMA, they can still register with FEMA and apply with the SBA. That's very, very important to know. I know that it's, it's not that close, the DRC disaster recovery center from FEMA in very city in the auditorium there, I know that it's far from here. But we always recommend the people to visit these centers to, to have that conversation one-on-one, they can load, upload the documents and help the people, it's better than applying online, always. And sorry that I only brought like one SBA kit, but I, 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 I did so many celebratory meetings today, I left the uh, last month in the Doverstone celebratory meeting, but are you, are you the chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, good, so, I'll give, I'll give you this. Yeah, so, uh, here, the number is very important. Uh, the people can call there, they can answer the questions, and they can give the status of the centers too, because they are always constantly opening and closing depending on the, on the, uh, visitors. So, uh, also, uh, I brought a flyer of SBDC, that, uh, SBDC is our resource partner, a small business development center, they know everything about disasters, they have business advisors. This is related to businesses, specifically I explained more, but they have business advisors, that means uh, and it's our resource partner, because we give them funds and the estate too, so they are helping with all kinds of applications, uh, to the you, I know that in Vermont, a lot of farmers, so they are helping the farmers to, to, uh, to, this, all, this kind of applications. They are a very, uh, good resource, and they are very valuable. And the, on, on the first item, the SBA that got local assistance, uh, this is not only for Vermont, this is for all the states. The people can find on this website the closest center to, to meet with those business advisors. They know about business plans, marketing, they, they can find loans, grants, they know everything about any kind of program with nonprofits, with the state of the federal government, they are a good resource. Also, I brought, uh, uh, I, this is a copy, I didn't have anymore originals, this is, because this is, this is not our federal agency, this you all know, this is USDA, they are bigger than us, they have programs for rural development for farmers, and they have, uh, programs for, um, public assistance, for homeowners repair and business repairs for the disasters too. Uh, they are like FEMA, that, that they are, FEMA, they are providing help also with public assistance and individual assistance. But, uh, I want to clarify the deadline that I, that I said about, that I said about FEMA is not related to public assistance, that's related to individual assistance. So, we don't only, uh, assist businesses, we also assist homeowners, renters, nonprofits, and businesses. That's very important to know with the SBA. Also, I visited here, um, and I'm coming to these, uh, meetings, because why? The people get discouraged with the SBA, because you all know that we are not grants from the federal government, and the people get discouraged. I always encourage the people to complete the procedures with the SBA, uh, with the SBA, why? No fees to apply, they don't have to accept it. And if you are denied by FEMA, most of the times FEMA refer the people to SBA. And if you are denied by the SBA, SBA might refer the people back to FEMA, and FEMA might give them all the other disaster assistance like grants, so at least they can have hope to receive something. Some people use these funds to, um, rebuild quicker, instead of you waiting for the payment or settlement of, of, of insurance company. Some people use the denigration letter to attach that in the, in the appeal of FEMA, to see if they can receive more funds. So, that's why, uh, I visited too, uh, here is more.
You are not FEMA.
No, I, SBA, but I.
SBA, small business. So, what you're asking us to do is to share the information with the community, and you're gonna leave me a packet, I'll make photocopies and I'll put it out on the website.
Yeah, this is my, yeah, of course, this is my business card with my information, but we always recommend the hundred number for the, for, for the citizens. Of course, you can contact me here, but the, uh, the hundred number is for the citizens, you know what I mean?
Well, thank you very much. Little town.
I, I have one question, what I thought might be applicable. Is it, is the SBA, do they assist people who do rental property?
Yeah, well, yeah, homeowners are renters too, of course, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
For this time, opportunity for me to hear.
All right, you did well getting here, thank you.
Chairman, one last thing, I always have to do this, uh, I need to take a picture to prove that I came here, if you can take me a picture, sir.
Yes, sir.
It's not easy to work these days, okay? Pictures of everything.
Okay.
I'll show you the picture of the Doverstone.
That's okay.
Sir, you took a photo from there, from the, from that corner. Like if we were, like if we were talking an action picture. So, I was explaining to you all, we are not the best option, we are an alternative, alternative, we have approved more than twenty-three millions. So for some people, we are the only option and best option, and that's why we are still here pushing the information, to see if we can still help, one more.
Okay, what is the interest rate?
Uh, right now, uh, as low as two point thirty-seven percent, but that's case-by-case basis. But at the end of the day, nothing to lose, because if you don't agree with the interest rate, you can say no, and, and you didn't lose anything, you know what I mean, so that's why. You're okay.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Chairman, one last thing, if you can share that with the Mayor Simon, real director, they are very busy.
That's me. All right, the next item on our project, on our list here is the on-call assistant for highway department to finish the discussion. And so, um, Stan took the time to, uh, retype and changed a couple of things on the original form at the last meeting to remind you. We decided that, uh, we would look for an on-call person that Mark could call at this time. Um, at least solicit some information from people. Mark, I was gonna make some extra copies, give him half a dozen of these forms that he could give to people he feels the interest lead in working with for on-call, and they can submit it to the select board, and then we could meet and discuss it a little bit further. Um, is that, is that where you all recall the same discussion? Talking about a rate of twenty-five dollars per hour.
I think we decided that was a reasonable range.
Okay.
I don't think you'll get anybody for less than that.
Right, um, so, at this point, I'll make the, I'll give this at the end of the meeting to Mark. Um, so Mark, I'm gonna ask you, if you have some people that you're interested in working on call, that you could have them connect, connect with me or you, and you know how to reach me. The other thing I did wanna make a point was, that I did find out at yesterday's road forum and meeting that Athens has lost its, uh, there was a death in the, uh, Athens Road Department. And so there is one person working there now, correct?
Right.
And so, um, unofficially or on the side, I was asked, would reply and consider a mutual shared agreement with, uh, Mark helping out Athens and Athens helping out Mark going forward in the future. It's something to discuss, it's called, uh, uh, mutual assistance. It's shared services, which is the way things are gonna go in the future.
Services is a good, good idea, right, and I should put it on the agenda for the next.
Well, actually, I, well, wait a bit, I've asked Wyndham Regional to come up with a training session for all of us on shared services and the rules, regulations, and parameters, and the best way to do it. Because there, there's a lot of information, and for one or two people to try to find it, Wyndham Regional has a fairly good handle on, on.
When will that happen?
Well, I just talked to them yesterday.
Okay, so we don't know yet, okay.
So, um, again, we're just finishing up the discussion. Are we in agreement? Make copies?
Doesn't hurt to person, to take, to consider.
Right, and then we'll, we'll continue on with the other idea of working.
How do you feel about it? You're the.
Yeah, I, I, uh, I was actually having a conversation and happened to meet at the town line the same time Athens Road person was coming down to turn around. And so we got out and talked to each other, and conversation came up about being a little short-handed and, um, what they were gonna do, and he, he said that, uh, maybe the select boards could talk together and
Which is what I, yeah.
Maybe we could pay today or per day or, you know.
Okay, but in the meanwhile, we'll just work with this, and you can give one name anyway.
Sure.
Okay, because otherwise you have to have a formal agreement with select boards. This, we don't have to involve another select board at this time, and you may not have that much need this winter, but if it's, if it's a storm.
Right, yeah, and, and also, you know, uh, other neighboring towns are in staying boat as well, they don't have full crews and.
Towns and just, yeah.
Looking to share.
Right, right. All right, so I'm gonna move on, then to, Mark, uh, we, we put on the table for this meeting, did you have an estimate of the amount of tree work that you need, uh, us to do, and if we, if so, should we start to develop an RFP for, for this winter?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, push it out a little bit further, only because I wasn't prepared for it.
All right, table, 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 item C, do you wanna bring, do you wanna talk about it in January or December or?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll get an inventory going on, and then we can.
Maybe December we'll talk then?
Sure.
Okay. Late December, December twentieth is the second meeting, okay. Okay, December twentieth for trees and all.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just also here, brief discussion for RFP development on each of the summer storm damaged areas. We need to determine the cost for returning to pre-disaster conditions by collecting bids. Schedule date to review our fees, and, and we need to wait for FEMA. Now, Stan, just refresh me on, on this. Uh, with this summer storm with Michael B., they are doing some analysis, and they will, they will contact us like they did for the other storm to offer mitigation that they feel is appropriate. Cause I asked them to mitigate or not to mitigate question, so, should, shouldn't we start item, uh, doing RFPs for?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing.
Yes.
They wanna know what we want to do.
Right, so.
And I did find a series of, I did find a summary of the various sites uh, in some of the, um, portal. And I printed it, uh, printed it out, I saved it actually. And, uh, in some cases, they've indicated that we are interested in mitigation, and other places, they've not, they've indicated we're not interested in mitigation. So, I don't know which ones were noted for Megan Brunk to apply for hydrology study, so I don't know.
Have that list, I, I thought I sent you the list of the, of the.
There's a list that Megan produced for the meeting with FEMA, but I don't know which ones we're doing mitigation on.
I, all of them.
I don't know if anyone else has a list.
I'm sorry, I, I sent to, she's going to, we're gonna have hydraulic studies done on all six sites. I'm sorry, I, I sent to, she's going to, we're gonna have hydraulic studies done on all six sites that have water. Um, and that, uh, the email that came back said that they're backlog, obviously, there's no cost for the hydraulic studies. But they're looking at January, February.
Yeah, I talked with her last week and she said it was gonna be several months, quote unquote. So that fits a February, possibly January.
So, I mean, we have, you know, a, a start on it, but um it is something that. We'll, we'll need to do. I just wanted to bring it up.
And as soon as we've done that, uh, my, uh, Mike. Michael would like that information.
The RFPs?
Uh, the, well, either that or an email describing what we want done with each of them. It appears that are willing to take an RFP or, or emails. I talked with Patrick this morning and there, there's.
Patrick is twenty-twenty-one.
I know.
Yeah, okay. I thought we were talking this summer storms.
We are. I'm offering that as a comment. Is that okay?
That's.
Great, thank you, okay. So, so that's where we are. Uh, we need to do that. We're gonna need to sit down and describe what it is we want to accomplish and look at what we want to mitigate.
Alright, so we do have notes on this and so I'll do my typing again and then we have to sit down and, and work on the RFP for it. And uh, I'm guessing we're probably gonna be looking at again this again in December, uh, just to get this going.
Right, right.
Well, we're, there's a meeting that we're having.
There's an, there's a meeting on November twenty-eighth with Michael to start uploading documents that we have for completed work. That's what that meeting is for, on November twenty-eighth. Because he asked me, did I want any assistance on learning how to upload to the portal? And I went, sure.
Not knowing what's going on elsewhere. I've already started to upload what I have, some of the stuff.
Where have you uploaded? What are you uploading? But what are you uploading?
Uh, the invoice that we got from uh Born.
Well, then we have to coordinate because.
I've been asking and looking for that.
I, I thought we were coordinating.
No, we're not.
Well.
Not enough.
Okay, well then.
Alright, so what we need is, are you guys working together in the same room?
I thought we were sometimes, but.
I'd ask questions and never get answers to them, so I don't know what to make of it.
Oh, you send out really a lot of emails and I don't read them all all the time. So if it's critical. Yeah, if it, if it gets. I, I don't know. Something you need immediate answer to, I know I've said this before, pick up the phone and call me.
Okay, that's what we'll do.
Okay.
Alright, so November twenty-eighth. Uh, Michael is coming down. You're going to be working on continuing the uploading and reviewing what has been and what should still needs to be uploaded. For the storm for the summer. I will write to Guy Tanza and schedule that it is a Tuesday, but it's the day that FEMA. Guy, well, no, I have to write it. Okay, I know, he prefers not to have the town office being used for, um, for these kinds of things, but these FEMA.
I just, I just answered the email to Michael and I had said in one of my emails that I would contact Guy and explain we need the. Need the thing, so I've got that.
You got that.
I've got that.
Alright, so you'll do that.
If, if you could, if you could, you know, uh, not schedule them for the Tuesdays and Thursdays. That would be appreciated, but I understand emergencies and I understand that we can adapt to whatever is necessary. But if you could, if you could eliminate Tuesdays and Thursdays from nine until two, that would be great.
I know.
But unfortunately, the twenty-.
He's coming anyway at ten, so. Unfortunately, on this one, I can't. I, and Stan, I will call you so that we don't. Cross, that we don't cross, so that I don't cross lines.
If you're open to the calls, I'll call you as well.
That's fine. I am open. But I, I don't think we duplicated anything.
I know we haven't, cause if we're going in and each looking at what is already there, I wouldn't duplicate something you've done and I would assume you're not duplicating how you do.
It's probably not an issue.
But I don't think it would be.
Okay, good.
Alright, so I'm gonna move on here. So uh, our P's, we're gonna be meeting to talk about the summer storms and. And uh, maybe we'll have some stuff for uh, Michael by that time. I can certainly get our, our general notes typed up.
No, there, there are two.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Cause we've got a couple of projects done already, Samborn, the Brent Bridge, those are done.
Good.
Okay, um, discuss additional FEMA forty-six twenty-one status, including the final paving. Mark, what did you find out? When are they gonna come?
Uh, I was told a week from Monday.
So.
Next Monday.
Monday.
November sixth.
Stan, did you?
Yeah, November sixth.
Are they going to uh open their, their boilerplate?
Yeah, they already said that. Stan already.
Yeah, yeah. He said that, he said that, uh, he emailed it to me.
Okay.
Uh, well, actually the phone call and then I sent it out to everybody.
That's right.
So whatever you got for me is what he said.
Okay, but it's not from him. It's what you recalled him saying, so it's second.
Well, I don't have his email, but it's what I repeated and I sent him a copy of that and he has not sent anything. I didn't say that.
Alright, uh, my concern with the paving, again, Mark and I were at a paving workshop yesterday. It's our temperature and the temperatures of it. I mean, it is a FEMA project and um, um, you know, eh, moisture and temperature is a real problem for doing any pavement. It's a small section, however, it's not like we're gonna have trucks and trucks of continuous paving material come in. Mark is gonna have to be there to get the guy started on it and uh. Uh, I recommend any select board members go up, ask questions if you have a chance. I said, keep people on, teams on their toes, especially this late of the season. Uh, I learned a little bit, I'll do some.
That's a small job for them.
Yeah, it's a very small job, but it's a big job to us.
Yeah, of course.
So.
So they're gonna be.
November sixth.
Just as a, a quick comment, I know we're tight, but for the Allstate job, it appears they've entered the Allstate job as having done the complete area. They didn't, there's no notation that was only fifty percent done, so we need to go in and do that, but, but I'll stop there.
Alright, uh, next item on here was a water mitigation grant and that was through the minutes on the uh, draft minutes that we got. I wasn't sure what that was and that's why I put a question mark on the agenda. Water mitigation grant.
Well, we, we have until, well, I don't know, you wanna do this, Mark, or you want?
No, you go ahead.
Okay, we have until the eighth of November to, uh, um.
That's what it was.
It's, it might be December, it's gonna, or possibly, I brought it with me, let me look. We, we have a limited time and it, and we're on a tight timeframe for, and uh, Vtrans, here it is. December eighth, and we need to decide what we wanna do for other projects. Uh, the dollar amounts are larger than a typical grant. I think roads is sixty, uh, culverts might be sixty, roads is forty thousand. Uh, so it's not two fifty or anything like that. And so we need to decide what, if anything, we wanna do on top of what FEMA is gonna do. Um, if there's such a project. And so they're probably not to take a big time up at a meeting like this, but maybe a work bee somewhere between now and uh, middle of this month. To work on something. The application itself is six pages long and sometimes they're expecting design engineering. Uh, and other kinds of information, so we gotta allow ourselves a little bit of time if we're gonna do something like that to get those kinds of things, if it's even possible at this.
So I, I actually met, went to the, the paving uh, road forum and meeting. At the firehouse in New Peak and um, it was put on by Wyndham Regional. And uh, Colin Bratton was there and Colin wants me to uh, meet with him. He's coming to uh, our neighbor towns and wants to stop in, um. And I told him that I'm kinda in a place where. Everything we wanna do demands a hydraulic study and the hydraulic study put out there. But we don't know what we can do in, under determination of the hydraulic study. We can make a plan and then if the hydraulic study requires us to upgrade, we might have to. Delete the plan uh accordingly, you know, as far as mitigating what we already have. Um, however, uh, Colin said that if we meet up. And, and he would look at any site that I point at, he would do the study. You know, prep it, lock it in for, so we don't miss out on our opportunity of a grant. And because there, they do our mapping of our road inventories, our culverts, everything. Um, they would be, would pick something out, less. You know, something that doesn't include a major um hydraulic study, so that we do have some type of a. Uh, a grant savings towards it.
And this is the water mitigation? This is what he's talking about?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's uh.
It's culverts, roads.
Centerback road and GIA grants.
Alright, both of those, okay, I was there.
Classifications of grant money available for each type of.
Right, category A, D.
Think the pamphlet I sent you, seventeen pages and it describes what's necessary for the various types and so forth, cause I, I didn't wanna have to take any more time or instead go over.
So we're gonna meet together and he'll identify. I told him that, you know, we've all talked to Megan at the meeting, all the surrounding town guys are in the same boat. They're waiting for hydraulic studies and it's a waiting.
Yeah, everybody's waiting.
But we do have small stuff that we can block into for uh upgrades.
So we're gonna need to know when it comes to budgeting, uh, December ninth, eighth is probably a, an opportune time. What our match is gonna have to be and whatever we do.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna have to make sure we have uh matched money for it, you know, anything worth upgrading.
Alright, so Mark, you're gonna handle a meeting with Colin and work that out and then have him call. Confirm with us at some point, cause it's, all these are fees and things that have to be done and hydraulics is in, and FEMA is all coming down on our heads at the same time. Okay, um. I also just, I, I let Stan know that, and, and he's gonna follow up on it. Jeff said not to leave money on the table from our GIA grant because the fiscal year grant from twenty-twenty-three. Deadline is, was changed from September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three to December third, September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. And I think we had twelve thousand dollars in grant, was it a twelve thousand dollar GIA?
We had twelve thousand five hundred dollars in a grant.
And we spent.
About roughly eight, eight thousand, so we got, we've got quite a bit left over that could have been spent.
Right, and so Jeff said that we could still find another culvert path onto that. But then again, there might have been some confusion as to how, with the left hand and what Wyndham Regional says versus what the grant people say. So you're gonna follow up on that for me?
Yeah, 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 there is, there, uh, that, that was told one thing and Jeff told me another thing. And you gotta look at, we, we have assistance, we'd sign a contract for assistance. We have up to fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, money that could be available, but for the project we did have done, they billed us eleven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents. So there's not an awful lot left. And what they did, you know, when you look at what they do, Jeff told me that the money that is left of that fifteen hundred dollars. They're gonna spend just like that for any another project. So we gotta figure out how to finance it. So the, the solution I'm gonna do tomorrow is contact Ashley Andrews of the appropriate Vtrans department and get her opinion on whether or not we can do it or not. Uh, otherwise, I'll just simply close it out and we'll get our roughly eight thousand dollars in three weeks.
Okay, very good. Alright, um, we'll go on to new business. So right now, we've told that budget development and reviewing past and current budgets, uh, some are photocopied and, and I've posted at your seats. A copies of the general funds and revenues, um. They're not in any particular order, but I just would like to confirm a couple of things. The daytime and place for this year's town meeting is going to be at night, correct? And it's gonna be March. So, that's the first Monday in March. The four, so it's, so it's gonna be in-person in the multipurpose room, correct? Not me, how wrong. It's the multipurpose room at the daycare on Monday evening, uh, March fourth. And it's going to start at six P M.
Uh, we, what did we do?
And you had dinner at five?
Yes, yes.
Six P M, okay. I just wanted to uh, review the date, the time and the place to make sure we all understand that. Okay, uh, town report and design deadline, if you don't know that yet. Um, but uh, David Jones, Stan said that is going to help us get the town report out. And we'll have some deadlines to get some documents ready. So if anybody is interested in doing a report for their. Committee or whatever on the select board, uh, please be aware that probably December is when we're gonna need those to be sent to David. For, for uh, fitting it into the book. Um, I also have, and you know, we don't have to discuss this tonight. But if you wanna take one and pass, pass this, um, we do want you, everybody to take a look at last year's warning. From that and then the elected offices and appointed offices realizing. Realizing that there are uh, uh, expirations of terms coming up. And so uh, we just have to be aware and start thinking about that as well. So this should be part of maybe not this discussion, but a future discussion about um. Uh, finding appropriate people to appoint or uh, make sure that we let the positions are gonna be filled, okay? Alright, so, alright, let's, right, so that we're down to uh, articles in the warning. Uh, again, we can discuss that. You have a sample of previous articles in the warning. Uh, if we wanted to go, to go back to daytime or Saturday or Tuesday, those are things that you have to consider. Uh, thinking about sooner rather than, than.
And you wanna cut off some of one of all the articles to add into the, into?
Say again?
Into town report, you wanna, what's your cutoff to mid-December for any?
Well, I think you are, I think we have everything done in December.
Well, last year we finished up everything on the twenty-ninth of January and it was sent to, sent last minute to David, so he's capable of handling it that late. What, December sounds great. That's our goal.
January third is the first meeting in January and then.
That's the way to go.
Yeah, alright, so, um. Alright, so next we're gonna go back now or to uh revenue, you wanna, so.
The typical way that the budget has always been done with the past is you budget expenses first. You figure out your expenses first. There's different ways to do budgets. We, we develop our taxes, the amount we need to raise by taxes based on the amount of expenditures. In the past, we've only budgeted for funds one and two, which is borne out by this year's town. Um, the past year's town report. So what I would suggest is that everybody take home their worksheet. And pencil in numbers where they think it's appropriate on the expenditure side. And then at our next meeting, we can start going through. Um, looking at the expenditures and comparing notes and seeing what we think rough estimates should be. The, a lot of input will be needed from the highway people. Is Archie gonna participate this year?
I emailed him, I had not got no response. And the last time we sat down, it was Mark, Archie and I and uh.
I'll talk to him.
Yeah, so. In the past, they would say, you know, add five percent, but we need a little bit more.
I think, I think um, a little more guidance would be useful. I mean, just so that Mark has someone to bounce ideas off of and we all get to hear it.
Sounds good.
Except it, it's fine if they like just confer privately and then bring it to a meeting.
Yes.
That's fine.
Right, so you're asking me to have Mark, uh, Archie come to the next meeting?
I don't know, let's see. I think it might be premature.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, but I do think that Mark should, Mark should talk to Archie and I'm gonna give Archie a call and make sure he participates. Okay, and then, um. The only thing I included that I, because of the way Melissa has changed some of the way. Things work now, like records restoration is no longer in Fund One, it's its own fund. Same with the capital improvement, same with the rainy day fund, I don't know if we budget for that or not. The school building I put in because this year we mistakenly allocated all the revenues out of that fund. And obviously, we need to leave some revenue in that fund.
Right, and I asked if you would do a budget for your.
So, that's why, so I put, so I put the school here so you can look at. So, that's why, so I put, so I put the school here, so you can look at what we think are actual expenditures.
Uh, we already have that for last year.
No, I know, it's here.
Oh, it's here.
It's here, yeah, so I included that, whereas normally it would not be. I did not put in the meeting house or any of the others, because for tax reasons, I mean, we don't budget tax revenue for that, but this year we do have ARPA funds, so we could consider how many, how much of the ARPA funds as part of the budget need to be split up and used by twenty? When do they have to be used? Twenty twenty six, so see if we want to consider that as part of the budget process, those are all my thoughts.
They need to be committed by the thirty first of twenty, of December twenty twenty four.
Now, twenty twenty, oh, the twenty twenty.
And then actually spent by the end of twenty twenty.
Good to know, that I did not know, so, so that's a good reason to discuss that, how we wanna commit this.
Okay.
And that would also answer some questions, as far as the meeting house committee. They should obviously, they obviously are doing their own planning and they should figure out, you know, they can start trying to figure out what things cost and things like that for what their fundraising schedule is gonna look like.
And I did ask, I asked Holly Ann in an email that if the meeting house was going to ask for appropriation funding from the town that she needs to get that into us next meeting.
Well, that's not typically.
It's not typical, but it's possible.
It's not a social service.
Wait a minute, can't do that, can you?
But we can.
The meeting house is not a social service, Dot, it has to.
But if they would like the town to budget money from the taxpayers to go in the warning, that they should let us know ahead of time so that we can discuss it.
Uh we could ask, it could go as warnings.
Yes.
You can make it as an article.
It could make, it could be an article, it wouldn't, yeah. I'm just getting caught up on the on the terminology.
Yeah, it's not.
Okay, so yeah, because appropriations and.
Appropriation is just a term.
Yeah, it's a different, it's a different thing. Um and then the last thing I think we should consider is just looking at the personnel, that'll be a big consideration in budgeting.
My my list is, my list of things to discuss uh as we go through is that we really need to uh put additional monies into our rainy day fund. Uh we have to really look closer at uh also improving our capital improvement fund. Um, one of the things that we now have with equipment is that we really should be looking at and having an equipment replacement fund. Uh we have a nineteen, uh we have a a a wheeled excavator that has uh quite a few years on it from nineteen eighty six. Um there was a time, and I do have notations when they were saving a dollar an hour from the use of the excavator and putting it towards the repair and replacement fund, but that, I found that is not, no, the grader. So replacing the, starting to save money for the next five, ten years for a new grader.
It was budgeted out of normal hi- highway funds, is how it was budgeted.
So we need to discuss it, because it's not.
Wasn't an additional tax appropriation, just so you know.
Well, uh also we need to talk about computers, we already mentioned the daycare uh building budget. Uh if there's any budgeting necessary for historic buildings.
Yeah, actually, computers should be meant, should not be budgeted for twenty twenty five, we should deal with that this year.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, hourly raises, uh I know what New Fane does is every year they add an additional fifty cents per hour to the raises. We have some people who haven't gotten raises in a while, like the listers are making, Helen Holt's making fifteen dollars an hour, that they may, we may want to um look at those. Uh we have always talked about it, but we always get talked out of doing audits and treasury audits with five different treasurers, are we going to consider doing that? I also wanna look at um additional stipends, maybe for some positions, we haven't talked about the select board assistant. Um and I think the select board stipend.
I have some ideas about the select board assistant, so some new undisputed ideas, but that can wait.
Right, um of course, with the highway, we need to talk about additional fuel, maintenance, repairs, replacements. Uh repairs, uh covering our salt, gravel shed, we talked about cement floors, matching grants and other repairs that we have to be prepared for, so those are things that I know that we need to talk about a- anybody else, and then we can go and start working on something right now. Well, um when you're looking at this thing that you gave us, the revenue sheets, Samara.
Uh you mean the bu- it's a comparative, the comparative budget form?
The revenue sheets?
So we're gonna.
No, I. So there's nothing pressed.
You're, you're looking on the wrong page, it's Dot.
No, I I have this.
Right, but these, what do we do with these? You just, I just put them in for info, we don't budget, it says on the top of the page.
Right.
Generally, no budgeted tax dollars, the way the budget works. There's, there's two pa- two packets, one that's actually the budget. Then the o- other funds that I, Melissa gave me, and I didn't, I thought, you know, keep them for information.
So these are the amounts that were raised through revenue.
Yeah, well, you have, you have two, two complete years, and then actually you have three. You have the the budget number, the budget versus the actual for the completed year, the one that ended June twenty twenty three. Then you have our budget, our approved budget for twenty twenty four, and then you have blank lines for twenty twenty five.
Correct.
I would skip all the revenue items, all of these, I would, I would no, no, the revenue items and the expense items are on the same page.
Oh.
Okay, so, and unfortunately, they don't give you, it goes, one, six is all total revenues. Okay, and it goes to total. The next one, and the only one that that unfortunately got moved is the education tax expense, which we don't budget, you can cross that off. Cross off the first line item on page one is W R M U E D, educational tax expense, it's not our job, we don't do that.
Okay, cross that off.
Start with select board. And all the um, all the employees mostly are all listed in order. Okay, and also I should note before we, I asked Melissa to do this in our standard format. Which is the way it's always been done, before, before the accounts are being reorganized, which uh Melissa told me, they're done, chip is read, chip from Nemrick is ready to upload it into the Nemrick system. He was just waiting for a final okay, but I said, if you give us a new budget with everything rearranged differently, we won't have comparisons from the prior year in the same order, it'll be too confusing. Um just give it to me the way it is now, and then upgrade the system. In Nemrick, so Nemrick is ready to be upgraded. Um and what that will do is actually group things in a much more, I hope, readable fashion. Remember, we talked about that a long time ago, and it finally is ready.
But staying with Nemrick, though?
Yeah, we're staying with Nemrick.
I thought there was some other.
No, there's no other, there's no other affordable software, which I'm aware. Okay? Alright, there are better softwares, they're just not cheap, so, um but so basically start with Fund One halfway down the page, skip, cross off that first line and start with all of this, all of the um personnel rows, which then go into all of the town expenses says that get budgeted, and also include, go all the way down through one, seven. Um halfway down the second page.
Mm-hmm.
What are you on?
You're gonna see the, all the list of the social appropriations.
Right.
So those, we usually will put in last when we get all the rest, all of the requests, and it goes as a separate warning. Right, but in our accounting system, it's part of the.
Starts with groundwork, right?
Right, okay?
Twenty, yeah.
And then the other thing you can ignore, anything that says transfer out, transfer outline items, transfer in and transfer out line items, which are generally the last line of any of the expense or revenues, are simply um like non-refundable transfers between funds. So for example, when the ARPA money is committed to another fund and it go, it goes into that fund as a revenue and comes out of ARPA as an expense, and that's what the one nine ninety nine transfer is. The next, the next page four of fifteen is, begins with the highway. And again, you can ignore the revenues for the time being. We'll put them in eventually, we'll put in, in in highway revenues, we we do put in things like state aid and things, we will, we will deal with revenue eventually, but start with the expenses.
That makes sense.
We start with the expenses.
And we'll come back to that.
And then we come back and we look at revenues. And then um records restoration is part of clerk fees. So that'll be an automatic percentage, you don't have to think about the other pages too much until we get to the school fund. And the rainy day fund will talk about the capital rainy day and all that stuff, we can talk about separately.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I would start with funds one and two, because those are the two hardest ones to get done.
Mm-hmm.
And then make sure that i- in the school fund, before we funnel the revenue to any other fund that we um pull even on money and cover, cover their, cover their costs.
I think right now we're eleven hundred.
Yeah, the school needs to have at least a break even budget. So, does that make sense to everybody so far?
Yeah.
I'm getting a little foggy now, I think it's later in the evening, I get a little foggy.
Welcome to Actra.
So, if if anyone wants an one number on page four of the fifteen, state aid. Uh Melissa asked me to give her the website, so I printed it out for Brookline last night.
We can put in the number.
It's forty six thousand seventy five dollars thirty three cents.
Where are we doing state aid?
That's what we know we're getting next.
That's what we know we're getting next year, forty six thousand seventy five dollars and thirty three cents.
So we're getting more than last year.
Yeah, you get, it tends to go up.
Forty six?
Forty six thousand seventy five dollars thirty three cents.
Okay.
And we'll get some of these expense items too, like from oh, the V L C T dudes, we'll have to, we got that.
We've got that, we've got that.
So, but let's, let's hold it till next week, and unless we have time, if we're not over time, then we can put it.
Right now.
We're at eight, so.
Couple of minutes, baby.
Okay, so, yeah, my thought is particularly with the things that are, we have to really think about, those are the ones I would focus on for homework. You know, looking at the numbers in between FEMA grants.
Alright, so you're asking for the next meeting, and that was penciled in, some of our, you know, anticipated expenses under additional. Right, and uh Guy's still on, Guy, do you have, I'll, if, I don't know if you have a, can we leave Guy one of these?
I I do have one of those reports, yes, I have a card copy in front of me.
Good, 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 because you'll be able to help estimate with a lot of the um important town clerk revenues. That's where Guy really comes in, he can come in particularly with knowing what clerk fees usually are. All the registration fees, all the licensing fees, all of that stuff.
Right, I have, yeah, I can help you with that, the, I just wanted to add this one point in regards to the computers. Um I've been excre- uh extremely careful in our office not to spend any unnecessary money because we're still waiting for the reimbursement from FEMA. But the the bottom line is that we do need computers and uh I don't know what we've appropriated last year, but we haven't spent any of that money, so I, I don't know if it was ARPA money or town budget.
Yeah, we discussed it, but it wasn't obligated, we thought it would come out of municipal funding.
Right.
Alright, our our computers are ten years old, and uh the bottom line is that uh a lot of the organizations are going into cloud apps, for instance, uh Nemrick. And that takes a little, it makes the computer a little easier to figure out what we need, because we don't need such a big powerful computer to hold a lot of data. Because basically, the apps are holding the data for us, for instance, Nemrick. So, um you know, going forward, uh like I said, I've been extremely careful of not spending any money that I felt was not absolutely necessary.
You're a good shopper, Guy, I know that. Our, our, but our uh flat screens are good, the computer screens are fine, it's just the CPUs that need to be replaced.
They may, they make, they may come as a package.
The, yeah, the monitors at this point, no, normally the desktops, you get the, the base, the the tower, and then the monitors are separate, and the keyboards usually come, they give you a, you know, uh basic keyboard, but our keyboards except for one is, are okay. The monitors are okay, they got big monitors for the treasurer and the uh listeners, our monitors are serving us well. Uh so that is not an issue, I think right now is the tower, and that's where we have to think about it, but by the same token, uh Comcast, because we get our internet for free, is giving us, you know, a an amount of bandwidth, but sometimes it's just incredibly slow. Only because, you know, we're limited to what.
And the computers are old, older computers are much slower than the newer computers.
Absolutely, so I just thought I just, I I added that to, I don't know what we budgeted this year for computers, because we still have until July, I'm sorry, June of June thirtieth of twenty twenty four, to spend some of this money, but uh again, I I hesitated to do anything until we get this reimbursement from uh FEMA.
It looks like the supplies, it's uh would come with supplies and postage, I think you told us, and there's thirty seven fifty, three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars uh in supplies and postage, uh see, what what this does.
What page, I'm sorry, Dot, what page you want?
Page one. One, supplies and postage.
Right here.
Yes, okay, right, uh and again, those all contingent upon postal postage prices staying uh pretty flat, but again, we've had another increase in postage, and because we have a a lot, we we're doing a lot more mailing than we have done before. Uh which is understandable, you know, we have different committees, different things. But um the postage, uh that, those, those supplies have been pretty flat, only because I've been buying absolutely, what's absolutely necessary for us to operate in town.
Alright, so those are the things that when you want to make a contribution to suggesting that the supplies and postage is. So if you have one of these forms, you could pencil it in and sh- and and if you can come to the next meeting, that would be helpful.
Right, I will, I I, you know, I I I, I've looked at this uh pretty carefully and I see, you know, a few things that we can we can work on, but um we're as tight as we can be in the town office at this point.
Yeah, okay, alright, um, okay. So we have our our marching orders to work on with this, is there anything else, and we can move on to accounts?
I'm good for now.
Uh, okay, um. Uh, I'll tell you, I know you were gonna talk to Judy, and and I guess I could have even, she's still not leaving the, if I sign a payroll.
I've, I've said it like several times, so wait, I can just go pull it out.
People pull it out, but I have my um printout of of what I signed on the twenty.
Yeah, it's the payroll, okay.
Okay, um alright, so right now, we're gonna do payroll warrant, I'd like to make a motion to approve payroll warrant twenty four seventeen dated ten twenty five twenty three. I'd like to make the motion that you concur with my signing the payroll warrant twenty four seventeen from October twenty fifth, in the amount of one thousand six hundred ninety nine dollars and twenty four cents, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Noga, discussion, again, I came in and sign, signed it uh and dated when I signed it, because it was.
And the next, the next payroll is being run this Friday, so it'll be the same deal for the next.
Have to comment and do that, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor concur with my signing payroll warrant twenty four seventeen dated ten twenty five twenty three in the amount of one thousand six hundred ninety nine dollars and twenty four cents, signified by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Alright, next item. I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, accounts payable warrant twenty-four eighteen. Dated November first, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of. Wait, my eyesight here, in the amount of two thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-seven cents. May I have a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Mr. Mella. Uh, any discussion? Um, I went through, it looks, I'll pass it around. You wanna pass it around or is motion, okay. Alright, all those in favor of approving accounts payable warrant twenty-four eighteen on November eleventh, November first. For two thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-seven cents, signified by saying aye.
Alright.
Any opposed? Alright, hearing none, the motion passes and I'll send it around for you to sign.
No, that one, yeah, I, I have talked to them. So we used to have checklists. For help, for everything that needed to be and everything. I'm gonna resurrect that. I was in on Sunday working with Melissa, so you know. Interesting.
Alright, next item, as we finish the signatures, Mark, you wanna, I have you on for highway supervisor. You wanna have any summary?
Are we on five minutes?
Yeah, there's approximately, just so you know, based on this, there's approximately five minutes each.
Okay.
So talk faster.
Yeah, I just continuing with, uh, roadside mowing with the past couple of weeks. I, I utilize the leaf mower. For twelve, um, I've used the truck to haul materials. Uh, onto the roads. I held materials onto one of the sites for FEMA repair down line, uh, to do the, uh. Armor repair on the road shoulder. It's taking the greater out, getting a touch up through the pothole on some of the roads. It were potholing due to the rains. I plan to continue general maintenance. Uh, as well as meeting with Colin Bratton in this for advanced consideration study for next year. And. That is, we're done with that.
Okay, okay, and you did attend the highway, highway formans meeting yesterday. We both did it. It was very important about paving.
Very interesting, very interesting, you know, meeting yesterday.
I got some information from that meeting, uh, about paving.
How many people were there?
About forty, thirty?
Yeah, it was, uh, several, maybe eight, nine, uh, surrounding Wyndham County towns. There was a road formans meeting in, in any.
Anybody can go, they want us to all consider. Yeah.
Uh, it's put on the Wyndham Regional and, uh, they had a couple of speakers.
That's, that's good. I was just curious. Okay, thanks.
Alright, Mr. Noga, highway grants and contracts.
Might stand you, have the extra time from Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
No, I don't really need any extra time. Thank you though. It's very kind of you to consider that. Uh, but anyway, I don't want to spend more time. Uh, the issue of the grants and aid and the potential for continuing that on, I will follow it up and investigate it. But I have essentially everything ready to report it. Uh, you may recall that, uh, over the last week. Um, all of the blue, I got a letter from AOT regarding the sand and salt shed scenario. In theory, we have fees due totaling approximately thirty-seven thousand dollars that we budgeted for this past year. Uh, we actually sent the letter in on the second of November of twenty twenty-two. Uh, advising them that we were withdrawing and then at some point shortly thereafter, we got advised that we were on the hook. To the AOT, uh, for essentially thirty-seven thousand dollars, just under that. Uh, they were supposed to, at that point in time, let us know if we had any options to lessen. Or have a waiver on that. We hadn't heard anything. And as you may recall, within the last forty-five days, Margot Gia in a meeting, uh, here. Brought up the fact that that money was owed and had we heard anything? We had not. She apparently reached out to AOT, uh, in her capacity as. Wyndham Regional being the manager of the sand and salt shed in behalf of the town. And this past week, we got a letter from Chris Hunt, who was the municipal projects manager for AOT. And he referenced, uh, nineteen VSA three oh nine A. Uh, nineteen VSA number five and then nineteen VSA three oh nine. F. And those are statutes that, uh, pertain to monies owed to the state by towns. And under certain circumstances, if there are issues that are beyond the town's control, we can request a waiver. And or a discount on the money owed. Uh, so, I read, wrote a two-page letter comprised of the reference to the statutes which he required. And, uh, that it was beyond the town's control, uh, and the increases in materials cost, construction, et cetera. And, uh, that was, uh, sent or delivered to him. Uh, if not last Friday afternoon, this, it was last Friday afternoon. He sent me an email acknowledging receipt of it and then in, indicating that it, it was approved under his purview. And then he would send it on to the appropriate, well, it was Ed Flynn, head of the VO, agency of transportation driving line. Ed makes that decision as to whether it's waived or, uh, discounted. And so I have no idea, uh, what will happen, however. If I can look at the tone and the content of his emails to me. It looks like we have a very good chance of having a lot of this done away with, if not all.
You're saving us quite a bit of money.
Yeah, yeah, so if we get that thirty-seven thousand. That may go to some other need the town has.
Oh, boy.
Uh, the other thing I've been doing a lot of, almost three hours every day, is FEMA. Uh, reading the necessary, uh, aids. They have several journals. Uh, one of them two hundred and ten pages long. I haven't read them all, but I've read department sections. I had a lengthy discussion this morning with, uh, Patrick Donlin from FEMA Boston. And, uh, it appears that, um. They just need to know the information and detail on.
One minute left, Stan.
Bennett, Bennett Road and Hallen Hill Road, and they wanna know the follow-up to the paving. And if we can s- state to them that the paving is done and Bennett Road is done. They'll be able to reach a point where they can obligate the money so that we receive money.
Release.
Without actually closing it out yet, which is another phase that we need to enter. Uh, it appears because we're under a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar total dollar amount. Uh, it might even be the million dollar amount. They are allowing some of the documentation that Samara, she probably, I don't know, maybe already knows this. But some of the documentation that you're preparing with, uh, Melissa or whoever.
Well, a lot of it is gathered now. I just, the only challenge left was sorting through Mark's timesheets.
Uh-huh. Well, I had this impression that everything needed to be on those sheets that we were given, that the project number. And also did, and apparently that, they're waiving that.
Yeah, I've heard from Melissa that they'll accept other formats.
Uh-huh.
So, thanks.
Yeah.
So, okay, I'm gonna stay, I'm gonna go back into my email communications with the, the person who was our project manager, I think her name was Jessica. Uh, before Patrick, uh, that I shared and I sent to her the fact that the, the paving on Putney Mountain Road was not completed. And here is the parcel I sent to them. Here, here was what we did get completed and we're waiting. And so I'll look for that email and share that with you if it's helpful.
If you would help, yeah, that would be great.
That, I think she was Jessica was the, uh, pressing manager.
Did say, uh, all over, but you, you might all be interested. They're still holding in reservation the potential. For, um, the mitigation of Hallen Hill Road, so that's not a dead issue.
Oh, good. Before you finish, I'm gonna let you bring this up. I showed it to you when we were here. This is the contract for three wired guys that Judy has prepared for us to, um. As a vendor providing, um, tech service.
Is there a number here? Is this an open contract or whatever?
It's a wire guys, isn't it their standard contract?
This is a standard contract, but there, is there any?
I would assume it, you know, it looks like it, it contains most of the articles, but I don't see a dollar amount that the contract is for. Have we always left them open?
Yes, we've always left it open in the past. They, they charge what they charge. I think usually Guy would know. He's gone. Yeah, but I don't think we've ever put in a dollar amount on the two-wire guy contract.
This is a copy of an existing.
They usually send up contracts. There's an annual contract for two-wired guys that they send up.
Our contract, so it's not. It doesn't say what they provide, so should I?
Nor does it reference the other contract.
Yeah, I would just reference the other contract. If we, why does Judy think we need this one?
I don't know, but I think I'm gonna table that and, and bring it to, table this for the next, uh, meeting.
I don't know if I've helped you or answered your question or not.
Well, I, I don't see any, uh, any service item is like itemization of what services they're going to provide.
No, it doesn't.
It's itemized in their contract.
That's what I'm saying, we don't have, I don't see.
So you need their contract.
Yes, we've been building in other individuals' contracts or, or, uh, criteria or conditions. If we've accepted.
I'll email, uh, put a note on it for Judy to see if she can find the actual contract that this is referring to, so that we have more for the next meeting.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, no, I don't have anything else.
Okay, Bruce.
Okay, I've been waiting, um, I had, for the last time, we had a discussion about. The round, uh, about the meeting house having a priority list. I had Leanne make up a priorities, priority list, which is really good, so just pass this around to all you. You can look at it at your own convenience. And since we're talking about money somewhere down the road here. Uh, Vanessa, you want one?
I just gave it mine. You give me another one?
And you can have one too, um, Mr. Bills. Uh, and you all can look at that at your own pleasure and, um, we can discuss down the road. Uh, how money's gonna be moved around, et cetera, et cetera. I wanted to spend the remainder amount of my five minutes, I love this, um, to talk about this letter that I had with Lionwell. And you all got a copy of what I sent to them and I sent them that copy for that. And then I got, this comes to my attention that it was an email sent to Lionel, rolling invoice and we're included in the. And we were not included in the email. We're not given opportunity to respond to concerns, okay. Then she went to an explanation about what I asked to have done, which was all through, but then I canceled the appointment. And then. I said to her when I canceled the appointment, I still would like to have the filters at your convenience, which I said in that letter, letter. She didn't at that time say that it was gonna be a service fee charge. And then she permitted somebody to come into the building and go downstairs in the boiler room. And I, then it dawned on me later on, bingo, I've told them in the past, no one goes in that boiler room without me. Amen, end of story. The only one that was permitted to do that and they'd been given permission to do it. Is, is Sean and, uh, and Hiram Knapp from Code and Coda. Now Sean's not, is it a different, different, um. Locations all will be getting in, but if they have a new person, that will be resurrected. I don't permit any, remember we had that discussion about locking the door and.
So the, so the girls upstairs didn't tell the guy to go downstairs?
No, um, now let me see. Um, I've been having problems personally, one personal. And with, with vendors generally about them doing what I want them to do and I ask them specifically to do. And that's what set off the first part, which is not to let them come into the building with some there. Now I'm getting to the point where people, uh, companies, it's usually basic companies, uh, not so much individuals like. Uh, like, uh, electric, uh, uh. Yep, no problem. Uh, Scott and, and, and Harry were great, but we're gonna go with this time, I need to keep, ba, ba, ba. But now, so, I'm getting to the point where I almost have to email with my request, so I have a backup.
Yes.
And that's getting, it's getting strange. Um, I, I have had conversations with, uh, Jamie a million times from Code and Coda. And twenty-one visits for between twenty-one and twenty-two to fix a heating system. And I told her this time, I needed somebody to close down the water system for the meeting house, because I didn't wanna ask the bull that, uh, Carrie at this point in time. The very next day, Carrie said, well, we don't know, I need the work. And I said, okay, well. The way it was left with Code and Coda is they were gonna call me when they were ready to come, their plumbing department. They disappeared. Can't have that. They didn't charge us, but here's an example with, 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 with the, with the, with Lionwell, that they appeared. Never told me they were gonna charge me for a service fee to drop off some filters. No, well, we pay, we pay the bill. It's over and over, over the hill, or whatever you wanna call it. And I'm just gonna have to change my approach with everybody from here on in. I'm done.
Get it in writing. I hear ya.
Just along with what Bruce gave out, I, I got this from Leanne, uh, it's some email that couldn't make copies.
Is it one from Dan?
The old one.
Yeah, that I, uh.
The only question we wondered about that is how much of that was done?
Um, and, and this is, I read it through and I, I didn't include that with what I gave you.
Oh, okay.
Because I felt that it was not accurate, uh, was reaching, um.
It was.
Paint exterior, uh, paint exterior.
Good, good.
So I thought her, her priority list is very close to what I would have written.
Good, good.
Oh, April, okay, this is back from April twenty twenty-one.
So I guess.
So, we'll, we'll, thank you. We'll take a look at that.
You could actually keep this.
So, uh, thank you, Bruce.
I can put in a circular font.
Energy committee has been tabled, planning committee, Samara, you have something to pass out?
I do. This is just, we had a good meeting on Saturday morning. And this is, Stan's already seen it, he's on the, you're, are you typing the minutes?
I sent him out this afternoon.
Oh, you did? I, I didn't, it must have been.
It was late, it was like four o'clock.
Oh, okay, good. It was after I checked him in. So basically, those are all our, what was accomplished. We, and we should have a draft, um, we're gonna work on a draft survey to go out. Any questions?
No, did Vanessa need one of these? Would you like that?
This one?
Yeah, you, yeah.
Community solar.
Oliver Ames put that together and I just said, can I copy it? And he said, sure. So.
What do you like, you're gonna do solar, uh, energy, or energy resilience, community solar power?
Pardon?
Energy resilience.
Yeah, no, these are potential new survey, survey topics. These are, we have.
They're updating the survey.
Updating the town plan survey. And so one of the things, some of the topics we discussed, including new survey topics are solar energy.
Okay.
Um, because right now the plan says not next to buildings, closer, uh, only on rooftops, things like that.
Ah, ah, okay.
So, yeah.
Okay.
So these are just some of the things that came out of that meeting.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much. Anything else, Samara?
Um, no, our energy committee meeting is this Friday afternoon coming up. And, um, and I have a phone call with Martha Gia on Friday morning to see if she'll. Find a way to put the meeting house back in the assessment list.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
We should have done that initial vote, you know.
So that's, that's all for me. Okay, alright, so select board chair. Uh, we, uh, we are working with, uh, Margot Gia for the hazard mitigation planning. Uh, we had a meeting last week. There were, I think, ten people involved, including those in person and some on Zoom. Uh, I did some outreach and I have some other people who would like to attend the meeting. The next meeting will be on November eighth. At six thirty here at Town Ball. It will also be on Zoom. Uh, I will do the same. But perch forum, Julie LaVorgna, Brookline Facebook page, bulletin boards for, and emails. For getting people to come to that, just analyzing the, uh, the da- data that was collected at the last meeting. And. It was about ten of us. It was a good person and then online, people online.
I thought it was a good meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
And minutes are available for that? No.
I'm sorry?
There's no minutes available for that, right?
Vanessa is working on that and I'm gonna check up Margot because Margot is going to.
Vanessa was here?
Vanessa was online, right? Yeah, she was online. In person?
No, no.
She's online, yes.
Said Vanessa Blue up on the screen.
It's a name. And she received the video. That's, I guess, Dan, you sent her the video from the.
I, I did record the meeting, but I haven't sent it. Do you wanna, want me to do that?
But somebody did send it to me.
Okay.
Who sent it to you?
Well, no, I never know who sends it. I always assume it's Guy.
Probably was.
Just look at the heading.
Guy sent it to me.
Just to be a nice guy.
All right. So we, if you bring the old, from two thousand seventeen, the Hazard Mitigation Plan, it was supposedly spearheaded by the town clerk and the town clerk was put in charge of setting up the meetings and making sure that the different conditions were being met. And so at this time, we're looking at a playing, a new chair for the Hazard Mitigation Committee. I don't mind being on it. Does somebody wanna co-chair it with me? I know Samara, you've been involved with Paul and Stan and Bruce. I mean, you're busy, but.
What meeting?
Who else is on the Hazard Mitigation?
Who else is on the Hazard Mitigation Committee?
Margot Gia, Stan, myself.
Oliver?
Oliver.
Oliver was there.
He was there, Chris Daley. Well, some of the, some of those people were involved in the Planning Commission in Residence that were coming into the Hazard Mitigation.
Oh, sorry. So.
Turn tunes up.
We had to put it on silent. Sorry.
So is anybody interested in, I mean, co-chairing it with me because I have.
I could ask, I could ask Oliver. He's on the Planning Commission. See if he's interested. He's great. If you have a chance to get him to co-chair anything, do it. See if he will. That's just my suggestion. If he now worked with him.
If he, if he doesn't, I'll try to do the best I can to help you.
Um, okay. I'm feeling like. Paul will.
Yeah.
It sounds good.
There you go.
So.
All right, we gotta, Oliver, Paul, stand up. We're gonna big team going. That's good.
Yeah.
All right. So I'll, I'll, I'm gonna post, I'm gonna table this at this time.
Yep.
And just maintain my current status of getting the emails out until I talk to Mr. Ames. All right. Any other topics as requested by the Select Board that do not require a vote?
Just a reminder, there's also a meeting, the MTAP meeting is November eleventh.
Okay, so that's one of the things I had.
At the same time, that meeting and another meeting. I forget which, there's an.
On the eleventh?
On the eleventh, both at nine o'clock.
Really?
Yeah.
Where's the other one?
I'll email you what it is. I noticed it today.
It's not here.
No.
There's an eleven eleven meeting here.
Well, that's, that's why I have Saturday. Item ten, because there are a lot of meetings. And so before we go, when we're setting the agenda, I'm gonna ask, we're gonna confirm those dates.
We have this one from the last time, remember? So what's the other meeting on the eleven? I know eleven, the last time we had our town planning followed by hazard mitigation. And this time we have the MTAP brainstorming session for opportunities. It's kind of like a mini town planning meeting is how I'm looking at it.
Yeah.
Not, it's not the same as town planning, but it's like a mini town thing. So and I said I'd do the, I said I'd do a flyer. I've got it drafted. I'm gonna put it up and spread the word as best I can because I said I'd take that on.
And that's just November eleven?
November eleventh, nine till eleven.
Nine till eleven. Okay. On November.
Here, here.
Here at Town Hall.
Here at Town Hall.
On November eighth at six thirty PM, there is a Hazard Mitigation meeting. On November eighth at two thirty, I am zooming with ADA, American Disability Act Review. And Samara, and Leanne and Dan Towler are gonna come over and we're going to sit and watch and participate in an ADA Zoom meeting that we signed up. Anybody can sign up.
I didn't sign up.
So I signed up for it and Leanne and Dan are gonna, would like to go to just to come work. So that's there. And as we go on, if there's other meetings, I really should know about that in order to make sure that, that we notify this guy. All right. Any other topics as requested? Yeah. All right. Communications, emails. Well, we have gotten some emails. I think Stan is handling most of that and Samara with the FEMA notifications and there's a meeting, oh, November twenty-eighth at ten AM at Town Hall. There is another FEMA meeting.
And it's specifically FEMA uploading.
FEMA uploading meeting.
And that way we can clarify how they want everything.
Okay.
I figured that would be good. And it's specific to forty-seven twenty. He can't help with forty-six twenty-one. That's next, okay, for his email.
What was that date?
November twenty-eighth, and it's just for uploading to the cloud.
And in not, I mean, in Mark and Stan, we have our November thirteenth, pick up the ball of the other stuff.
Yeah.
If you can come.
On November ninth?
November ninth?
November ninth.
What about nine?
To register the truck?
The truck.
No, that's the seventeenth.
Seventeenth?
Seventeenth at eleven fifty AM.
Okay.
I'll put it in your calendar.
Seventeenth is the truck. November ninth is what?
That's okay.
It was my fantasy amount.
November thirteenth is something else. You said you were gonna meet.
November thirteenth is a working meeting with me and Mark mostly. And that's when Stan took a lot of mitigation notes.
Okay. And do we wanna have a meeting, a working meeting to review over the grants project that you, application before and it's due December eighth? Stan, you wanna?
Yeah, yeah.
Pick up, I'm not going anywhere, so.
Okay.
I'm nodding on that.
Uh, let's see. Do you wanna do it? Uh, would be the week of the fifteenth or do you wanna do it at the end of next week? We've got a lot that, I think. Sixteenth or seventeenth, I'd suggest.
Seventeenth, November seventh. The, you're gonna be doing the truck on the seventeen.
Uh, that's right.
So we can do it in the afternoon or the evening?
No, I'm, I'm gonna allow some time. When I sat there last time, there were people that were there the better part of an hour. So not knowing, and it's seems to be all dependent on a guy on the outside the counter.
Let's do it the sixteenth.
All right. If that's okay, I mean.
Yeah, all right. Then we'll confirm the time and we'll send out an email.
I'd rather not disappoint you.
For Stan and the application for grants stuff, which is due December eighth. All right. So those were the emails.
And when are you meeting with Colin to go over some things?
Well, it was supposed to be tomorrow.
Uh huh.
So if it's not tomorrow, it's gonna be very soon.
Okay. Could you let us know what your thoughts are and what you had in mind and care?
Yeah.
So that we can, when, when we get together on the sixteenth, we'll be aware of that. So, okay.
Yeah.
And, all right, the V L T C, June's came an email and regular mail. I got an, I got a mail letter from, I got a couple appropriation requests. I put it in Judy's box. She'll be putting together, combining. We did get a letter from the Wyndham County Sheriff's Office, which is important for budgeting, that their rate per hour for contracts. And anything less than two thousand hours is sixty-four dollars an hour. What we usually do is we budget for ten hours of.
I remember.
So, so we'll have.
It used to be fifty dollars an hour.
Yeah. Yeah.
While you're on that topic, well.
Four dollars.
Well, I think Samara and I went to a meeting last Tuesday.
Oh, yes.
At the Townsend Town Office. And at the end of that meeting, a Select Board member from another town close by asked this, two, I think we were together. You were talking with someone else tomorrow. She asked if we'd be interested in going a share with the Sheriff's Department, moving towns.
A lot of people are thinking about that.
So that was asked of us. I don't know how you wanna handle that or what.
Another shit service question.
Yeah.
Right. And that's why I, when I brought that up to Jeff Nugent at Wyndham Regional, he thought that was a good idea because he says that is going to be how lots of things are gonna be done in the future. So just becoming more resilient, being able to you know, share services for leasing activities. Okay, probably divided by per capita rates.
Or mileage or whatever.
Yeah. All right. So setting the agenda for the next meeting on Wednesday, November fifteenth. We're going to November fifteenth, let's see, three wire, three wired guys.
Two wired guys.
Is it two wired guys? That's just, it's. What?
To multiply. It's okay.
Two wired guys. And then what else should we?
Did I contact Judy to see what the other contract is?
Oh, okay, the contract. You wanna?
I mean, what, I just wanna make sure that one, one of us doesn't assume the other's doing it and miss it. So just if we can decide who's gonna, I mean, I don't.
I'll ask you to do it.
Okay.
Get the contract hat on. I just saw it flash and I said, okay, do that. So the contract, the trees, but we said trees is in December. Okay. Oh, to be arranged. Okay.
Budget.
Oh, yeah, the budget. So we'll do the budget for.
Just call it budget business.
I can hardly wait.
All right.
But we're way ahead because we have Samara's expertise, you know, really.
Tell Melissa when she should attend, you know, because she can answer financial questions that I won't be able to pull up.
Sorry, RFP, RFP update.
Oh, right. R F.
Because she.
Everything's on update. Thank you. Okay. All right. If anybody has anything else, shoot them to me before the, not that Friday, and I can edit to the agenda. If there's nothing else, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Go ahead.
Eight thirty-eight.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eighteen at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.